Again, good evening, patrons and guests, and welcome to the meeting. My interest has been expressed in recent weeks with regard to my position as your superintendent and the position of our school board with regard to the implementation of Common Core curriculum standards that have been implemented in school districts across the state of Oklahoma in the past few years. And therefore, because this interest is well comprised of just of my entire report this evening, the implementation of the Common Core standards, also known as CCS, in Oklahoma, has been a little bit contentious from the beginning back in '08 and '09. CCS, the Common Core standards, were implemented in Oklahoma's school law in July of 2010, and then go into the end of '08. The doctrine of CCS has also been somewhat contentious nationwide, as many of them by themselves have been politically conservative disagree with it for being what they perceive as a promotion of a nationalized curriculum that is tied in with big business and control of our youth, along with the belief that our nation's students are being channeled into specific niches in the workforce for the benefit of corporate powers. As a result, Common Core has become the political hot potato of the day. Common Core gained momentum as the No Child Left Behind reform effort passed in 2000 started to lose steam toward the end of the decade, 2008, 2009, that era. Discontent spread with that reform effort. And you can look at Common Core two ways. One group sees it as a nationalized curriculum, and the other might see it as a set of standards that complement our existing curriculum. I too am somewhat wary of a nationalized curriculum, as it does take away local control. I do, however, believe that we need high standards, and that is what some of what Common Core promotes as well. My personal preference would be a curriculum and a set of standards that would be tied closely with the nation's existing ACT program. My logic is twofold there, as the ACT is already the accepted standard across the country that our admissions institutions have hired education. And two, the standards and the testing have already been developed, embedded, and cannot be manipulated in an arbitrary way by the state legislature through the State Departments of Education. In my opinion, the country's national education establishment acted a little too quickly in dumping the priority academic student skills, also known as PAS, that came along with the No Child Left Behind reform earlier. The state of Oklahoma was also quick to jump on this bandwagon, as the timeline calls for us to officially do away with the PAS next year with the full implementation of the Common Core in June of 2014. Major changes have also been made in the state's testing program, with high-stakes testing and so-called changes in rigor being the rule of the day. This is the part that I personally have the most trouble with as a superintendent, as this process has been hastily implemented, in my opinion, and may have caused harm to our students in ways that may not be fully comprehended for years to come. That being said, I do not advocate boycotting or opting out of the Common Core field test at any grade, regardless of personal feelings that I might have. These kinds of tests do need to be field-tested in some manner prior to being mastered to Oklahoma students in the future. Naturally, the public is considerably behind the curve in realizing what has occurred in their public schools during that transition period. Despite our warnings and protests back in 2008, the legislature and the State Department of Education went ahead and made those changes. We also expressed our concern again back in 2008, 2009, with the possible train wreck that could occur with regard to lower graduation rates, high failure rates on end construction tests, A-3 upgrading policies, et cetera, but to no avail. Now with all the bad publicity and fallout, the public has been awakened, as well as many of our legislators, as it has caused a split in the Oklahoma House and Senate. Even the House Speaker, T.W. Shin, is now opposed to Common Core, and many other legislators are having second thoughts as well. This promises to be a really hot topic in this legislative session, and will no doubt be debated and discussed at great length. Changes could be forthcoming, but it's too early to tell at this point. Our position as a school district is this: All Oklahoma school board members, all school administrators and teachers are bound by law to uphold the laws of this state, which include for the time being the full implementation of Common Core, along with the high-stakes testing aspect as directed in state law. At the same time, we can continue to express our concerns as parents and patrons of every school district in Oklahoma with the changes that have been mandated in our state's education policies and standards. We can and will continue to do this by lobbying and following all legislative guidelines to promote change. This is why the formation of parent legislative action committees, also known as PLACs, have become so important in Tulsa area, with that movement spreading rapidly across the state. These groups are now organizing themselves and educating other parents and patrons about these issues, and are seeking their help to make changes in public education law. We know for a fact that legislators are much, much more likely to listen to a group of parents and patrons advocating change at the Capitol rather than a group of school superintendents. Unfortunately, we as school administrators are often seen as disgruntled planners, not my words, who do not want accountability and high standards. Nothing could be further from the truth. We all want high standards and accountability, and we must prefer that the State Department and legislators fully vet any changes in the state's curriculum and testing program with our input and our expertise in the process. To continue to ignore folks who have dedicated their entire professional careers and lives to public education is a huge disservice, as well as a huge mistake in making any changes to the state's education system. That pretty much concludes my report.
First, I want to say thank you to the parents and also to our administration and the school board for allowing me to present some critical information in regards to the changes that are currently taking place in the Osso Public Schools, similar to what Dr. O. said with the Common Core. Please note that also the name Oklahoma Academic Standards has replaced the original name of Common Core. It is actually a purposeful naming in order to deceive these standards as being a state-led initiative. I actually have them, and on the inside you'll see that this is Common Core State Standards, but then on the inside it actually says Oklahoma Academic Students. We wanted to establish a dialogue with our school board and especially fellow parents because we are unique and different, mainly because we don't just look at Common Core on paper or in theory. You see, me and my family, we actually experienced Common Core hands-on in the classroom. We lived in Colorado, and Colorado began implementing Common Core back in 2010, almost immediately after the 45 states were bribed by federal prosecutors. The standards were not even written yet, and in fact, later we found out the Common Standards are not even written by educators. Anyways, we uprooted our entire family specifically to try to get away from Common Core, in hopes to give our children a more traditional approach to education, more specifically reading, writing, and math. What a tremendous difference it made in our children. In fact, it was a major turning point, especially for my eight-year-old son. Both of our children learned and achieved more in just one year, as opposed to the three years that we spent barely surviving Common Core. They soared because the traditional standards here in Owasso were real and genuine. They were clear and they were exact. The major difference we saw was that teachers here were actually teaching. They stopped to take time and value every student as an individual. We noticed there was not any major pressure of teachers having to erase their material in order to meet standards or just teach to the test. So who says our current standards in Owasso are already not good, or great for that matter? How many parents are currently lined up outside our administrators' buildings demanding a major overhaul of our district-wide standards or state standards? If our school standards are so poor, then why is Owasso growing at a rapid rate? I will tell you why: Because we love it here. We've only lived here a year, and we absolutely love living in Owasso. This is a community built on character, and in fact, we as parents are extremely grateful for what Owasso is teaching our children: Moral values and a well-grounded education that will prepare them for success and mold them to be leaders. Don't you remember we have A-plus grade expectation schools with 90 percentile test scores? Two weeks ago, I noticed tons of Common Core materials coming home again. I about had a panic attack. I asked a few teachers who were reluctant to talk, mainly in fear of their jobs, but the consensus was that they felt Common Core was not practical and the testing was excessive. I asked fellow parents, and not a single parent I approached out of about 50 had even heard the words "Common Core." This is exactly what happened to us back in Colorado three years ago. Nobody even knew about the slow progression of Common Core. It somehow just sneaks itself right in quietly, secretly. Now, if these standards are so great, then why are we having to secretly implement them? Now that I began seeing Common Core in Owasso, I demanded answers. I immediately contacted Mrs. Bischlein as I was going to protect my children. Mrs. Bischlein is the curriculum director, and so I asked her what she knew and what Owasso's plan was. I had a heart-to-heart with Ms. Bischlein, and I told her our past experience with Common Core. I divulged all the detrimental aspects of what Common Core did to my children in Colorado. Her response to me was this: "This is a nationally mandated standard. Unfortunately, we don't have much choice. This is the law. We must abide." Quite frankly, I was disappointed in her lack of concern. My parents always told me that if all my friends were jumping off a bridge, that I was expected to be leader and not follow. I have been raised to stand up for my values, even if I stand alone. My purpose here is that each of you will become enlightened and will go home and do your own research about the Common Core standards. Then you can take our past experience, combine it with your dedicated research, and decide for yourself as parents if these standards are truly what is best for our children and best for our district. I went ahead and printed off the standards from the ok.gov website. I have them right here. Math is 93 pages, and the ELA is in the hundreds, so I don't remember the exact number. Anyways, you can also get the link off the Owasso Public Schools website in the parent's top right-hand corner. Due to major time constraints, I can only highlight a very few number of these, so I figured I would just start at the basic level of kindergarten math. Please note, this is new math. It is also known as front-end estimation or integrated math. I really suggest that you write that term down and Google it tonight, which by the way, new math is subjective math. It is not objective, which means that it takes an abstract approach to reasoning. I'm going to turn to kindergarten grade overview, which is on page 10, and I am going to read to you the kindergarten standards of mathematical practice for five-year-olds. I'm only going to read the top three. Number one: Make sense of problems and persevere in solving them. Number two: Reason abstractly and quantitatively. Number three: Construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. Now, why in the world would we want five-year-olds critiquing other five-year-olds who don't know anything about math? And I don't know about you, but I don't even understand these abstract concepts as an adult, so why in the world would we expect five-year-olds to meet these standards? Let me tell you what did happen to my five-year-old. We actually had a kindergartner whom, by the way, was very good with math and numbers. He began to hate school. He hated math. He became very discouraged, and essentially, he started having anxiety issues in kindergarten. He would refuse to get out of the car. He would lock himself in my car, I kid you not. He would come home with stomachaches, headaches. Quite frankly, he felt like a failure, and so did we, because we could not grasp these concepts, and it did not take very long for him to completely shut down. Children this age are not mentally capable nor are their brains physically developed enough to understand abstract subjective reasoning. This is exactly why typically algebra is not introduced until the later years. It used to be closer to eighth grade. But now teachers are expected to start this entire process in kindergarten. Yet these children have not even learned the basic math concepts. They have no confidence nor fundamental math concept with any numbers. Talk about getting the cart before the horse. We cried. I cried every day. It was a struggle daily. It was horrible to watch my son come home and hate school. Now, let me move on to the writing standards, which writing becomes the main emphasis in Common Core. In fact, even in math, you have to write at least two to three sentences to prove your answer. The writing part of Common Core was the hardest and most difficult standard for my kindergartner. The main reason is because kindergartners typically are not independent learners. They need lots of guidance from their teachers. How many five-year-olds do you know right now that could actually write incomplete sentences with punctuation and all? Most importantly, it is extremely difficult for them to be able to write. They cannot read fluently. And due to the cost of implementing Common Core in Colorado, we had high class sizes with no assistance. I ended up volunteering immensely in the classroom, and I personally saw these expectations and the entire class's difficulty firsthand. My son had not even mastered the letter sounds, his sight words, or even writing his full name, let alone a complete thought and sentence with immense details. So let me read to you now the research to build and present knowledge standard for kindergarten writing. I will just read the bullet points one, two, and three from page 18. Number one: Write arguments to support claims and analysis of subtanted topics or texts using valid reasoning and relevant and sufficient evidence. Number two: They should write informative explanatory texts to examine and convey complex ideas and information clearly and accurately through the effective selection, organization, and analysis of all content. Number three: Write narratives to develop real or imagined experience or events using effective techniques, well-chosen detail, and well-structured event sequences.
Kindergarten?
Kindergarten.
Okay.
Now, in regards to these specific writing standards, again, the main focus is to encourage students to write lengthy, detailed stories, and yet many of them still cannot read independently. My son was expected to write personal narratives after personal narratives, and sometimes even progressive poetry, and lengthy events exactly as they occurred. Truthfully, five-year-olds are not developmentally able to think literally in regards to time or even put things in specific order as they occur. That is exactly why they get today, yesterday, even just five minutes ago, all mixed up. I can tell you firsthand that not a single student in my child's class could actually comprehend what the teacher was expecting of them. Really, do we have 32 failing kindergartners? I don't think so. This once again created major anxiety and stress on not only our son, but the entire class as a whole. My son began to refuse to get out of bed in the mornings, simply from the sheer terror of thinking he was going to have to go write more papers with more details that he did not comprehend. Talk about banging your head on the wall. I actually can compare it to teaching a two-month-old how to walk. They just are not developmentally capable, and kids this age have not been alive long enough, nor they even have enough life experience to relate to a writing standard such as this. It creates a lot of undue stress and apprehension, not only on the students, but imagine the teachers. Now, let me move on to the reading standards back on page 10. This is considered the anchor standard for reading. Again, I'm staying right in kindergarten. Number one: Read closely to determine what the text says explicitly and make logical inference from it. Site specific textual evidence when writing or speaking to support conclusions strong from your text. Number two: Determine central ideas or themes of a text, and analyze their development by summarizing the key supporting details and ideas. Number three: Analyze how and why the individuals, the events, or the ideas develop and interact over the course of a text. Now, this defined in college and career-ready is to build a foundation for college and career readiness. Students must read widely and deeply from among a broad range of high-quality, increasingly challenging literary and informational texts. Now, it's bad enough when your child starts out distraught over school, as did mine, and we as parents knew with our first child that something was not quite right. But he was a boy. He was very energetic, and we couldn't quite pinpoint it. However, when our daughter, the natural learner who loved school, began falling into the same exact pattern and started absolutely hating school, it was then that it became very obvious for me as a mother. The 2020 hindsight vision was even brighter once we came here and moved to Owasso and put our kids in a traditional school. Now, let me talk about how these standards affect older students. Let's focus just on third through 12th graders. As Dr. O. said, next fall, 2014, Owasso schools will be fully implementing Common Core in all grades. And you see, there is this major problem. It is called a gap, and it is huge. Imagine if a child has been taught a traditional approach their entire life, also known as a fact-based approach to learning. Now what happens when they are only tested on a new transitional subjective material? Let me give you just one example scenario to explain this. Let's say that I teach all of you for five to 10 years, all about airplanes, the makes, the models, the engines, you name it. You have studied, you'll put forth your best effort in order to master this entire product line. Now it's time for me to give you the final test. It's also known as an EOI exam, which stands for the End of Instruction in Order to Graduate. Your boss will now hand you a test with questions only related to auto-mill bills. This is still a mode of transportation. It's not quite the specific mode you've been mastering. How would you feel? What is your success rate, and what would be your test score? Do you see where our gap lies? It is a huge problem that nobody seemed to have a solution prior to rolling out and implementing these standards. And now at this age, your child is older, and he has had overwhelming pressure to perform on one test. In fact, the End of Instruction test counts for everything in order to graduate from high school. You must pass four out of the seven. One single test is one to determine whether or not your child moves on, regardless of the fact that he might be a straight-A student, he might have major testing anxiety, he may even be overcoming major challenges at home, and there are many, many other factors. But now what? Well, let me also mention that just this fall, maybe just a few weeks ago, they changed the grading scale, also known as a cut score. You might have read it in the newspaper. Now, in order to receive an A on the same test, you must get a 95 or higher. Isn't that motivating?
Speaking of, I'm glad we didn't change those.
I understand. I knew you did not. Let me go on. Let me go on and tell you what Jinkx thinks about Common Core and what their school district is doing. In fact, the middle school principal, his name's Ron Miller, he says, quote, "As a district, we have worked way too hard, and they aren't Jinkx schools what they are. As far as I am concerned, we have no option but to fight." I have included his blog on one of the parent handouts, which I already handed out, and he has absolutely stuck his neck out on the line in order to state the truth as a leader in education, and quite frankly, it is very admirable. My point is this: The Jinkx schools are very similar to Owasso, as they are also successful as are we, and we want to keep our schools that way. In order to do so, we must unite as a community. They have formed a parent-led lobby group against Common Core because we only have power in numbers. Currently, they have 1,200-plus parents standing together to rally in opposition of Common Core. They are doing this in hopes to reform our legislation, and they are choosing to do the very difficult thing, the right thing, but not the easy thing. They are not ignoring these standards in hopes that they just magically disappear or fade away. There are many states, 49 to be exact, that also adopted these Common Core standards, mainly due to the race to the top federal funding and No Child Left Behind waivers. Florida, Georgia, Kansas, Nebraska, New York, and even California are currently fighting hard through their legislations to back out. The Douglas County School District in Colorado, who after years of implementing these standards just recently stood up and rejected all of the Common Core standards as a county. Written on their homepage is this: "The members of our school board have voiced our concern for our students about the principle of the national standards being enforced. We feel as though this is strictly a top-down approach to education." So let's find out what this means, a top-down approach to education. Essentially, the federal government mandates to the states that they teach a transitional progressive approach as opposed to the traditional or academic approach that we were teaching. The state then in turn holds the state board of education accountable. To do this, we hold our superintendent accountable to our principal, and then they take further down to our teachers. We give up all local decision-making in order to decide what and how our students learn, as well as what content needs to be implemented in order to pass these high-stakes standardized tests. As most of you know, this education industry has been making changes for decades. It took me a long time to do a lot of research and figure that out. But by this point, most of these educators up here are probably numb and assume years from now we are going to be re-discussing another reform strategy to our education system. That may be true, although prior to now, there has not been a big key player like Bill Gates. You see, Bill Gates is one of the major funders here. He has invested billions and billions of dollars into this, and he has created a software program that is designed to evaluate and streamline the entire process, along with longitudinal database tracking systems. Technology is a game changer, folks. See, in the past, no matter what education reform took place, our school district had the ability to filter a lot of the information out. But unfortunately, when these standards eventually become streamlined, the student will sit right in front of a computer, and at that point, there is no ability left to filter out whatever content is being tested. Do you see what happens? Technology now makes it very difficult, as books become a thing of the past. How then would a teacher ever filter out some of this content that administration or you and I as parents do not agree with? These same computerized tests have been recreated to meet Common Core standards, and they are going to be administered to all students. This right here is exactly why all schools will eventually be affected, including private Christian schools as well as homeschool students. Homeschool students still have to take tests in order to prove that the student is on grade level. Now, do you really think that they are going to create a separate test without Common Core standards for all of us parents who have chosen not to implement these standards? And how would a private Christian school student get into college without passing one? You see, right now, the ACT SAT is currently in the process of being rewritten. Do you see why we as parents in this room have little options and why it is so important to fight this top-down approach? Three years ago, Common Core snuck in on our family. I did not ever expect to be up here fighting Common Core, trust me. But we are here today to bring awareness and prevent this from happening again. Us as parents must be informed. We must be aware of Common Core, and we must pay close attention to what is being implemented in our children's classrooms. It is very sneaky and progressive how they move this stuff in. It's in phases, one, two, three, okay? And as parents, it is our duty to protect our children, especially because school already has enough challenges. If we do not fight for our kids, then who will? I am not waiting around to see the bottom drop out and regret ever speaking up about everything I have already known and lived through for three long years. I absolutely refuse to let the should've, could've, would've haunt me. And this is the ninth inning, folks. Are we going to let our federal government hit a home run on us while we all go running in the other direction? Bottom line: Common Core in a short amount of time has already proved a bill. Just go check out New York, Colorado, Kentucky, or Georgia test scores. Quite frankly, my child is not a robot that I am going to send to school to be programmed to pass a test. Our children, our teachers, our principals are way more valuable than any given test. And if my child, or any child for that matter, is not engaged in these informational texts, then they lose interest. Whatever happened to curiosity, adventure, and resilience? We cannot be idle and sit back accepting mindlessly somebody else's opinion for truth. Should we be training and programming our students to just pass tests, or should we be inspiring them? Plus, I would really like to have this somebody define college and career-ready. How do these standards guarantee that for every single student in our district, especially after we've already stressed them out for years and years with high-stakes testing? Are you telling me that if my child does not go off to college to receive a college degree, that he or she is not successful? Is the hard-working farmer that farms 400 acres, the fireman, the business owner, or even the military helicopter pilot down the street not successful? It takes so much more than an opinion-based standard of college and career-ready to convince me as a parent. I do not buy it. I refuse to sit back and watch every child's joy for learning be stolen away. We are all created to do so much more. And why would anybody in our state of Oklahoma be willing to accept any amount of money in exchange for a child's brain? You know, I am really sad for the kids in our community right now, the ones who will never know the beauty of a good inspirational classic literature novel because it is more important to read informational texts like an EPA guideline or a simple standard. I am also extremely sad for the kid who will always think that understanding a mathematical process is far more important than getting an accurate or correct answer. I sure would not want to ride in the car that those kids are going to engineer. And I especially do not want them monitoring my medication dosage when I am in my retirement Now, if these standards and expectations in kindergarten are the bottom level, then we all know the staircase only rises and climbs from there. As a parent, I attempt to rationalize why these national standards expect my five-year-old to be thoroughly engaging, clear, precise, informative, and instructive in all aspects, and yet nearly all of their standards and elements, including their grading assessments, are nothing but ambiguous, rhetorical, and vague. I am all about setting standards, but we must have concrete, realistic standards that are attainable as well as measurable. Now, this is just the tip of the iceberg, folks, of these higher-quality standards. I mean, I really just got started. By rigorous, what they mean is excessive in workload. So once Common Core really gets rolling here in Oklahoma, you can go ahead and expect a ton of extra homework. Trust me when I say that these teachers cannot get through all of their benchmarks nor their modules in class, because you see, the teachers cannot get through them- modules in class, because you see, the teachers cannot get through them. Now all of this information in class must come home, because their jobs, and more importantly, their teacher evaluations depend on it. The standards truly become an introduction of sorts; this is what we experienced. Because there is no time to make sure children are grasping the concepts, they must check off: benchmark, benchmark, module after module. And before you know it, there is no retention. We don't have time to go back. I suggest you start asking your child's teacher how overwhelming it all is. Benchmark after benchmark, moving through things at a rapid pace, teachers have no choice but to go through the motions. There is no time to teach anymore, you see. We have rigorous standards to achieve. Our children lose their individuality, and more importantly, the teachers lose their flexibility. I call it the race to nowhere. And essentially what happens is the good teachers and leaders that really want to teach children either retire or quit. I mean, look around; how many teachers and principals just retired here in Owasso? My intentions are this: It is time for us as parents to stand up. We must wake up. We know this is a principles and values thing. As a mom, these standards, which were created initially for local boarding schools, it absolutely makes me angry. Owasso schools are exceptional, and we must keep them that way. Our schools are not and should never, ever be considered common. Our city is a city of character, not a city of average. How I see it, like the Jinx principal said, he's right: We have no option but to fight. And I thought about it: I can either fight this battle for the next six to nine months and hope to get a reform through legislation, or I can fight it for the rest of my child's entire education. For me, that equals 14 years. Do I have hope? Yes. As a matter of fact, I do. Right now, our Senate is split 50-50 on this matter. So what can we do? What is our process? Well, we as parents must bombard our legislators, our state superintendent, our state school board with phone calls, emails, letters, basically anything to make them aware that our community of Owasso and us as constituents demand a reform. What would happen if every single parent and every single school district in the entire state of Oklahoma did this? It is actually very simple. I have created a Facebook group called Owasso Against Common Core. I will start posting specific names of people, their phone numbers, their addresses, for us to contact in order to voice our concerns, and I challenge each and every one of you here tonight to connect with them directly and also share it with your friends. We must fight for our teachers, but more importantly, we must fight for our kids. As I stated before, Jinx is doing this, and I personally have spoken with many of these representatives: Gus Blackwell, Senator T.W. Shannon, et cetera. But honestly, the most powerful one-hour conversation I had was with our representative, Aunt Kim. You see, she is pro-C Common Core. However, towards the end of my one-hour conversation, she admitted that I had some valid points, and she was honestly going to look into them and follow up with me. Therefore, it is conversations like these that can begin to persuade our legislators, and honestly, almost every single one of them is on the fence. With power in numbers, conversation after conversation, letter after letter, they will begin to embrace our viewpoint as parents. You see, it has been my discovery that most of these high-level decision-makers do not even have their own children currently in school, and they are essentially far removed from all these actual standards and the direct impact. That alone in and of itself is exactly why every single one of us in this room needs to stop what we are doing and make this a priority. A priority to educate ourselves and then address our legislators. Our children's education and our amazing Owasso schools are at stake. We have thousands and thousands of innocent children and teachers relying on us. That's all I have.